To order the Board of Education meeting for Monday, August 8th, if everyone would stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show that we have all members present except for Jeff Hires. And we have, first up, we have the adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy and a second by Barbara. All in favor? Six-zero. All right, next up, approval of bills. Ryan, did you have a chance to look those over?
Yeah, I took a look. I didn't have any questions, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ryan and a second by Brian, all in favor? Six-zero. We have, next up, the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 2016-2017 budget. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for public comments regarding the fiscal year 2017 budget, which was published in the Dodge City Daily Globe on July 27th of this year, as required by law. The published budget keeps the total mill levy for 2016-17 at 57.06 mills, the same level as last year, 2015-16 school year. If anyone would like to comment on the budget before the board takes action on it later in our meeting, please come to the podium at this time. I don't see anybody jumping up, so we'll... I'm sorry?
Will you just close it? Close the table.
Okay, I declare this hearing closed for public comments on the 2016-17 budget for USD 443. And then we will address the budget later on in the meeting. All right, we have, next up, recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium at this time.
Good evening. I know how tall I am because I have to extend this up. That's one of the problems of being so tall. But, members of the school board, Superintendent Allen Cunningham, thanks very much. I did submit a letter to you, and it was given by Yvonda. It should be in your packets, I'm sure. So, but I'm just going to read that off now, and so put it into the record and let the public hear it. So, "Dear Board Members, on behalf of..." I guess I should introduce myself. If you don't know, I'm Tim Bolwaren, the news director, play-by-play broadcaster at the Western Kansas Broadcast Center. So, "Dear Board Members, on behalf of the Western Kansas Broadcast Center, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for the tremendous support given to us during our first season of broadcasting Dodge City High School Athletics on the radio. Now, this letter is overdue, but it is written with heartfelt gratitude and appreciation. At every opportunity, we tried to express what it meant to us, the privilege to cover the activities of these fine young men and women. Writing this letter summarizes in a few words what we were all feeling in our hearts. During every event we were at last year, our company was mindful of the level of commitment, the players, fans, coaches, and everyone affiliated with USD 443 expected from our broadcast. Our company also believed it was equally important to highlight on some activities that may not have received much recognition before last year through Z98's weekly Demon Todd Program. That'll air live from 6:00 to 7:00 this year. You're invited to come down to the best western North Edge Inn if you want to see us do the show live this season. Whether that was an interview with the marching band or a student who recently received a full-time scholarship to Fort Hay State, all these achievements were equally important and deserve recognition. I think in adding this element beyond our play-by-play, we focused on why Dodge City is a great place to live and epitomized the type of qualities we expect from our students as they become the future leaders of America. As always, we're looking for ways of improving what we offer to the community. We are going to add some elements that will provide additional information for our listeners while also continuing the further development of students in the district by instilling creativity, confidence, and harnessing public communication skills. We're going to add a sideline reporter for our football games this year, which I think will add another element to our broadcast that we didn't have last season. All of these are aspects needed for future success in life. What we plan to offer is not seen in many school districts across the state, but are resources that truly add value to being a student in Dodge City schools. This could, this all could not happen without your support, and it is why we are proud of what we have already done, but we also realize there's a lot more we can achieve. The great thing is, is each class graduates, a new group of students will be able to build on the opportunities that are being created now. Beyond the wins and losses, we are hoping to build an environment that is, in many ways, an extended classroom and allows each individual the chance to celebrate their achievements with more than just family and friends, but with the entire community. In hearing from a number of people in Dodge City, they are grateful for this type of coverage. I can tell you how many, I can't tell you how many students and parents requested CD copies of past games or interviews last year. We are happy to get this type of feedback, and it shows our efforts are being rewarded. We look forward to what our second year brings. Thanks for all you do. Sincerely, myself, Tim Bolwaren. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the consent agenda. That includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the July 11th and 25th Board of Education meeting, approval of the Fall Family Fund Food and Fitness Grant Award for Lynn, approval of Lowe's Toolbox for Education for Sewell, grant award for Sewell, approval of the Head Start Early Head Start Supplemental Grant Award, the Kansas Preschool Program Grant Application, Kansas Preschool Program Grant Award, Kansas Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant, Home Visitation Grant, and Head Start Ford County Grant, and approval of staff development and related services from Southwest Plains.
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
Motion by Ryan and a second by Tammy, all in favor? Six-zero. Okay, we're ready for new business, curriculum and instruction. Who do we hear from first? All right, Tammy?
Can you just volunteer me?
Yeah.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update and then see too if you had any questions on the Southwest Plains. Southwest Plains gives us a lot of support. And, in, for teachers, for administrators, for coaches, and that kind of stuff. So, we just wanted to kind of give you a touch base there. And I don't think you probably had any questions on that, but if you did, let me know, and I'll help you out there. Okay, so I think we're going to go ahead and move on to John, who gets to share about special education.
Board of Education, Superintendent Cunningham, appreciate the opportunity to visit about the Southwest area Cooperative District Number 613 this evening. With me, I have Dana Sprague, our director, and Derek Dismang, Assistant Director, our newest Assistant Director. The information I'm going to give you won't cover even close to everything that goes on, but we do want to try to give you an idea of what we do as an interlocal and what we do in Dodge City schools. First thing I was going to point out is that we are an interlocal, even though we have cooperative in our name. And simply the difference is, is that with a cooperative, there's one district's board that runs the cooperative, where with an interlocal, every district that's represented in the interlocal has a board member on our board. So, we have 14 school board members on our, on our board. The, excuse me a minute, I haven't run one of these very much.
On the back.
There we go. I see. Our, as I said, our district covers 14 school districts, and that takes 10,000 square miles. You can see the different school districts that are represented. About nine years ago, we split those districts up into three areas. The South area, which has been covered by our Assistant Director, Sherida Goldsberry. The North districts have been covered by Nancy Sapp, who recently retired. And then myself, I've been covering the Dodge City schools. Derek and I, this year, are going to do some sharing in the North districts and the Dodge City schools so that he can get some experience in both areas. Our budget for this year is the same as last year. So, it's $15,970,334. You can see the breakdown of how we get our revenue. 53% from state funding, 17% from federal funds and Medicaid, 22% from local assessments. And I believe in your, in the sheet that Superintendent Cunningham put out, it talks about the numbers for that, your local assessment. For all schools, they're $346.05 per student, and that's not just special ed students, that's your total FTE. And, so yours is $2,244,860. Now, our expenditures, you can see, pretty much goes close to one thing. 96% of our expenditures are salaries. We, we don't have a lot of overhead in terms of buildings and so forth to take care of, so most of our money does go to our salaries for our teachers and other staff. Year to year, we average about 145 certified staff and 300 classified staff. And of course, that's always dependent upon the number of students we're trying to serve and what their IEP say. We have a number of people who actually cover throughout the district. You can see that list there. A lot of our school psychologists cover schools in Dodge City, but then they also may have to cover some schools outside of the Dodge City area. And then speech pathologists are pretty much the same, but then like occupational therapists, teachers of visually impaired, physical therapists, and so on. We basically have one of those. So, they cover all 14 school districts, travel all that mileage to help serve our students. And so mostly, they're in a, while they do provide services, they also do a lot of consultive-type services to help schools working with those districts. And if we looked at the population of students, Dodge City basically has about 61% of that population. So, Dodge City takes up quite a, quite a bit of it, and obviously, some of the financial responsibility is pretty big in Dodge City. The next two slides, I have listed the schools and what types of rooms, services that we have at each school. You'll notice that all the schools have what I've called the interrelated resource room. All that means simply is that they cover various exceptionalities. Typically, they're the more mild exceptionalities that they're working with, and most of those students are, most of their day in the regular classroom. Probably 80% of the time, they're, they're in the regular classroom, and they get some time pulled out. It just depends, again, on the student's IEP and what's needed there. I've also listed their intellectually disabled rooms. We've typically, in the past, called those self-contained rooms because the students stay mostly in that room due to the intensive needs that they have. But in recent years, we're working at trying to get those students out even more. So, it's more like a resource room, and it just depends on the student and the intense services that they need, how much they actually get out in the regular classroom, and how much they spend within that special ed room. And basically, the same thing with our emotionally disturbed rooms that are listed there. Those are students whose behaviors have gotten in the way of their ability to perform in a classroom, and so they do spend some time in that emotionally disturbed classroom. But again, we're working at trying to work them out into the regular classrooms more and be able to participate with their peers. Under bright beginnings, I listed three early childhood special education classrooms. Those are early childhood classrooms that are just for special ed kids, although not all special ed kids are in those. But then, we also work at trying to get them out into some of the Head Start classrooms and others, depending on numbers and regulations and so forth that we have to deal with there, how much they get to be out in that way. Youthville, I think most of you probably know, that's a residential setting. A lot of the students there are placed there by the court system. And Dodge City Schools runs a school out there, so we provide special education services there also. We have three teachers that are shared between Youthville and TEC. And TEC, the Therapeutic Education Center, also shares that campus. They have two classrooms there that they use, and so we do some sharing with teachers there also. The Therapeutic Education Center is a place where we have students who, whose behaviors are due mostly to some severe mental health issues. And so, we've partnered with our interlocal, with Dodge City Schools, and Compass Mental Health to provide the services, and so they get extra mental health services by being a part of that therapeutic education center. And in this particular case, we have students who come from some of our other 14 districts also, as those are needed, so that is provided there. We also have one teacher in alternative education, provides services for the STRIDE program. She also goes out to juvenile justice and serves some of the students that are taking classes in that area. The next slides, I've just listed the numbers of students that we have that have those particular exceptionalities. And you can see, the largest one is the specific learning disability. And that's just basically students who have a learning disability in an area of reading, or writing, or math. Most of those students are served in our interrelated rooms. You'll see the developmentally delayed, those are our, some of our younger students who are delayed in, in five different areas, as, as it's said in assessments that we do there. Those students have to be given a different exceptionality when they're nine years old. At that time, it has to be determined if they have a learning disability or some other type of exceptionality that would go with that. And, so at that time, or determine that they no longer need our services. OHI is just other health impaired. A typical student like that might be someone who has ADHD that is keeping them from performing in the classroom. The ID are the students who have very low cognitive abilities. Of course, the emotionally disturbed are those with behavior issues. You also see a multiple disability. Those are usually students that have a combination of physical and cognitive disabilities that really affect their ability to be in the general curriculum. On this, this slide, the second slide, it shows the total number of students that we serve in Dodge City, and that's 713 students. That includes students who are speech-only students also. And the disabilities that I've listed here in those numbers are their primary disabilities. Some students have more than one disability, so there would be a secondary disability. In fact, as I've listed here, there's 137 students with secondary disability of speech. The last part of this, I just wanted to share a little bit about how a student gets to that point, how they become a child with an exceptionality and receive special education services. And it begins, actually, with the general education. And the, the law requires that when a student is struggling and teachers are concerned, that they go before the SIT process, the Student Improvement Teams, and discuss, how can we help this student? What interventions can we do to help this student? And then there, to try research-based interventions to try to help this student. And they work on that over a period of time. As they do that, they review what they've done, they, they try to keep considering that. And, and once they determine that what they can do in general education is not enough for that student, then they could make a referral for special education. When, when we evaluate a student for special education, there's several things that we do. One of the big things is, is that we look at the data that the general interventions have shown us to see what kinds of things are going on there. We do some specific types of assessments, depending on what we're looking at for that student, what the concerns are. And also, talk among, talk with the parents, talk with teachers and other staff involved to see what kinds of things that we need to know about this student and how they can perform. There's actually two prongs that have to be met in order for a student to receive special education services. The first one is to determine whether or not they actually have an exceptionality, such as a specific learning disability. But then the second one is, if they have an exceptionality, do they actually need special education services in order to be involved in the general curriculum? And sometimes, we don't always think about that. We think if, if a student has an exceptionality, they automatically need special ed services, but that's not always true. Then, if a student is qualified, they do have an exceptionality, and they do need special education services, then we look at writing an individual's education program for that student. And that basically is to look at the data and see what types of things we need to do to help them in, in the general curriculum, what it would describe their exceptionality, it would describe the, and develop, review, and revise in accordance with special education laws and procedures. And it would describe what the student's present performance and functionality is, and, and then what we can do to, to help them in those areas. In the least restrictive environment, and that's one of the things I wanted to talk about, is the least restrictive environment. Least restrictive environment is simply the idea that these students be served in an environment that does not restrict them from being in the general population, general curriculum. And so, we look at a continuum of services that goes anywhere from the general classroom, being served right there in the general classroom, to things that are more restrictive, is what that's supposed to say. It says less restrictive, but it should say more restrictive. So, we look at that continuum and see what, what place do they need. But we always start with that general curriculum. You know, can the students stay inside the general classroom and be served in that way in order to get their special ed services, and then work our way out from there. The team that decides this is called an IEP team, and basically, there are required members of that. The IEP team consists of parents, special education teacher, general education teacher, and the principal or the principal's designee, someone who can make decisions for the school in that case. But there are also other people who could be involved, especially if we have related services, such as a physical therapist or a speech pathologist that needs to be there, and anyone else who the school or the parents think would offer information that could be pertinent to that. And of course, the main idea is to look at what the services are that that student needs and how we can give them those services and keep them within their classroom, within their school, and continue to help them grow. And it's always, I've always said that the goal of special education should be that someday, they don't need us. Any questions?
John, could you give us an example of when a student might have an exceptionality but not qualify for special ed?
It's a little bit difficult to describe, but basically, it might be someone who, yes, we do see that there is an exceptionality, but they're able to cope with it, they're, they've been able to figure out how to work through that and take care of, you know, their needs that way. Sometimes, it might be something where a 504 plan would be more appropriate, especially for some students who have physical disabilities.
Okay.
So, is dyslexia somewhere in...
It's, it's part of the specific learning disabilities.
So, would that be kind of an example, maybe, where they've learned how to...
Mm-hmm, sure.
...manage them that?
Yes.
Ma'am, I address that. John.
Yeah.
An example would be...
Microphone.
An example of a student who might have a disability but not qualify as a student with an IEP would be a student, for example, a dyslexic student who is still making adequate progress in a general ed curriculum. Or a student with ADHD that has learned enough compensatory skills that they don't actually need special education services because they're being successful in, in a classroom environment. So, one of those prongs is going to be whether or not they're successful at school despite the disability. And one prong will be whether they qualify under federal guidelines as being a student who meets all of those criteria for a disability. Does that answer it?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Okay.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
I just want to point out, Dana Sprague is our director for 613. And Derek, I want to make sure, Dismang? Dismang is our co-director, is going to be working with John. They'll be splitting the duties with us, he's coming on. So, you'll see their faces from time to time in the district, helping us with different special ed issues. I just wanted to point out that you're here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, are we ready for our enrollment update?
And present board members, Superintendent Cunningham, we got some good news to share with, about enrollment. Enrollment is still going on. If you ask the ladies at First Stop, they have not seen any disruption in the number of people coming in. We were turning away people at 5:00 today because there were still families coming in. We expect this to continue. The, as the pattern holds, there'll be people coming in to enroll all the way until Labor Day, even though we start first day of school on August 17th. So, we are expecting that the numbers to go. So, we do want to remind you that the numbers I'm going to share with you today that Superintendent Cunningham has given you on a separate handout. Each of you should have it. It's entitled Enrollment Information. You'll see charts for each of the grade levels. The, this is a snapshot of where we stand based on today's figures, sometime earlier today, because we've already grown since these reports were run this afternoon. But first of all, I just want to point out a few things for you. The, we're serving 3,211 elementary students as of early this afternoon. We have 1,469 middle schoolers, and that's pretty well balanced between the two middle schools again at this time. And Superintendent Cunningham makes, you know, that's primary role that he has to sift through every year is all the, the transfer applications and the special requests to keep the schools balanced in their attendance. And then the high school now is at 1,919 students at this point. We expect, right now, the continuing growth that we see again this year of over 107 students, larger than last year at this time. We expect at the head count to be up again, between that 100 and 125 students each year that you've been seeing growth over the last several years in Dodge. And so, we expect that to hold steady. We, the elementary was able to fill positions. We didn't have to consolidate positions that were cut down. We are running two sections at Sunnyside and Central, three at the other schools, with four at Ross. And the Sunnyside does have a third, fourth grade combination in one of its sections. And the rest are going to be two sections in third grade, two sections in fourth. So, right now, the numbers are doing good. We didn't have to borrow any teachers from other grades to help with numbers. So, we're keeping those... keeping those. Our classrooms will be full, but we are in a better position than last year as far as class numbers are concerned. The middle schools are sitting right at 727, 730 kids each is basically what we can average it to. We expect them to be around that 733, 735 number when all things are towards the beginning of the year. The high school is sitting, as I said, is 1,919 kids at this snapshot right now. If you look at the middle school and the high school numbers, you'll see the column Youth Bill. We are only counting the kids that are actually our kids in our region. We get more kids that we serve from throughout the state that come to us, but that, these are the ones that we will actually receive funding for. The other ones are going to be, go back to their home districts. And TC will start low and move kids up as we place them there. So they will continually rise. And usually around December is when we see an influx of youth field kids that tend to come from the state, too. We see a larger January, December, those two months start to raise the youth field numbers. JSRC, that is our juvenile detention, we provide education for those students, and so those are the numbers that you see there, the starting numbers for us. That's been a very important program for us, and we'll have, you've seen on the week in review that we talked about that program a little bit, and there's some changes with the new law, but we are trying to actually intensify the intake interventions with those students in order to get earlier interventions with them versus waiting until they're actually placed there by the court. And so we're going to try to change some of the procedures logistically for us to get intake involved quicker with kids that are in that system. If you notice, we have some good news, too. On the right-hand column, you will see at the very bottom right, there is a 78.2% collection rate on our fees. So the families have done a tremendous job of getting their payments in at this time, and so our material fees and instructional fees are on a, they're actually ahead of schedule as far as collecting in comparison to years past. So we have 78.2% collection rate as of right now, so that's really good. Cash still is the number one way that people are paying, in person. We have 8% of fees being paid online, which is still a service to our people, but it's well down in comparison. People like to come in and do the transactions in person still is their preferred method. Any other questions about enrollment?
I'll tell you, between the time I got these numbers at lunchtime and the time we got ready to come to this meeting, Samantha at First Stop emailed me and said they'd enrolled 27 more today.
Wow.
And some of these numbers do include students who haven't made it in for enrollment at the middle schools and high schools. All of those at the elementary that didn't make it in, they've contacted or found out everything they could find out, and if they didn't make it in, they've dropped them by now, or they've inactivated, let me put it that way. Middle school and high school students tend to show up eventually, and so those are still, some of those are still active. But we think this is a pretty good idea of where we're going to be with about 100 kids higher than where we were at this time last year. So we are really pleased with the community coming in to, number one, to finish their enrollment onsite, number two, to pay their fees. Those fees are important, are an important part in the instructional materials we're able to provide for our kids, and it's really nice, and it's such a high percentage of either paid or paid in full by this time before school starts.
That's great.
Yes.
The last thing we're going to do is Tammy and I want to invite you for the new teachers' training that's going to be starting on Wednesday, August 10th. We have a 10:30, that's going to be the start on Thursday, Wednesday, 10:30 a.m. Superintendent Cunningham will start, and then he will introduce Lisa as the board president, and we'd like to have all of you present, if you can make it, if you can come over for the introductions and to see the new teachers. Be a great welcoming event, and we'd sure invite you and hope that you can make room in your schedules. We know you're busy, but new teachers would love to see you, and we'd like to have you there if at all possible.
I know that we are, if I could just interject, I know that we are really busy, all of us, but 15 minutes tops is all it would take if you can take that time to join.
Anything else you want to add?
And I just think it's a neat opportunity for the teachers, the new teachers to our district to get to know us. Some were a unique district, and it's neat for them to be able to see that we're one body and that we do a lot together. We focus on the individual needs of the teachers and grade levels, but we still kind of come together. And so I think it's a really neat time for them. It's a busy three days for them. They want to be in their classrooms and getting everything ready, so we try to be really respectful of their time and make sure what time they are giving us is very valuable to them.
Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. All right, public information. Yvonda.
Before I turn this over to Jackie this evening, I did want to remind you very quickly of the back-to-school welcome that's on Monday, August 15th. The nutrition department will be serving breakfast from 7:00 to 7:45 in the high school comments, and we will begin the welcome at 8:00 in the auditorium. We would love to have as many of you again as possible who could be there, and if you are able to attend, we would like to introduce you at that time. So it is an all-staff welcome, and we do anticipate everyone being there, so we would love to have you. All right? At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jackie and let her visit with you a little bit about this year's Ring of Honor ceremony.
Thanks, Yvonda.
Thank you.
Madam President, Board Members, Mr. Cunningham, it is once again my honor and privilege to be before you this evening, to share with you the inductees for this fall for the Ring of Honor. And this evening, it is a little different than it's been the last couple of times I've come before you. I happen to know both of these individuals, and I think many of you in this room will know both of these individuals. I promised both of the recipients, they are both very humble individuals, that we would not do anything any different with these two gentlemen than we have any previous recipients. So respecting my promise to them, we will make the introductions this evening, and Karen, if you will start with our first one. We have Mr. J.C. Rickenberg, who is familiar to many of you, and I will read this. I wasn't going to, and then I thought for a matter of record for the meeting, that I would go ahead and read both of these press releases. Will go out to the two media folks that are here this evening, and first thing tomorrow morning to all of our media events, our media locations. J.C. Rickenberg is a familiar name to many people in Dodge City. He became the athletic director of Dodge City High School in 1971, serving as a leader of the Dodge City High School Athletic Department for 28 years before retiring in 1999. J.C. and his wife, Doty, still reside in Dodge City and still frequently attend Dodge City events, often to watch their grandkids participate in the Scarlet and Royal. Before beginning his teaching and coaching career, J.C. played football at Northwestern Oklahoma State University. He became their first NAIA Football All-American in 1957 when he earned third-team honors as a senior. The halfback from Fairmont, Oklahoma graduated with his bachelor's degree in 1958, was then inducted into the Ranger Hall of Fame in 2001, earned his master's degree from Phillips University in 1966. His first coaching position was as head football coach at, I don't know if I'm going to pronounce this right.
Okeen.
Is that correct?
Okeen.
Okeen.
Rattlesnake capital of Oklahoma.
Got it. High School, Oklahoma, followed by a move to Dalhart, Texas in 1960 as an assistant. In 1964, Mr. Rickenberg became the head coach, football coach at Dodge City High School. During the next eight seasons, he guided the Red Demons to five league championships and a state title in 1970. He coached two undefeated teams during his tenure at Dodge City High School in 1966 and 1970, along with guiding three of his teams to one-loss seasons. His final career record at Dodge City High School was 58, 16, and 1. Rickenberg was widely respected by his peers. He served as president of Kansas Coaches Association from 1974 and '75, and was selected as the state's top athletic director by the KIAA in 1977. Thank you. I'm going to put it down here. That same year, he was recognized by the, as the National Athletic Director of the Year. He served on the CACIA Board of Directors from 1993 to 1996, and was inducted into the CACIA Hall of Fame in 1999. Finally, in 2006, he was inducted into the National High School Athletic Coaches Association Hall of Fame for outstanding service as a coach and athletic administrator. J.C. stated, "I am very humbled to be inducted into the Dodge City High School Ring of Honor. Dodge City has been a great place to work, live, and raise a family. I'm very proud of all of this community as accomplished over the years and appreciate the opportunity to be a small part of those successes." And the day that the committee met, and then I went and shared with both of our recipients, J.C. was maybe one of the most humbled experiences that I've seen him. Those of you who know him well have seen him in many different shades. And in that day, I was one of those points in time that you don't forget as a human being, extremely humbled, very thankful, and very much still bleeds red. So it will be very nice to have him back at Dodge City High School, to recognize him on Friday, September 2nd. Our second recipient, most of you will know very, very well, and that is Mr. Alan Cunningham. Alan Cunningham's been an integral part of USD 443 for more than 40 years. He began his teaching career at Northwest Elementary School in 1974, where he taught third, fourth, and sixth grade students. He was named principal at Northwest in 1981. From 1990 through 1992, Alan served as principal at Will Rhodes Garden Elementary School while directing the school district's integration of computer technology. In 1992, he became the district's first technology coordinator and served in that position until being selected as assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction in 1999. He's been the superintendent of schools in USD 443 since 2006. Alan is a member of a number of professional and community organizations and boards, as well as being an active member of his church. He and his wife Sue have two children, both graduates of Dodge City Public Schools, and their granddaughters are currently in attendance in Dodge City Public Schools. Mr. Cunningham earned his Bachelor of Science degree in elementary education from Oklahoma Baptist University, and his Master's degree from Kansas State University. He completed his building and district leadership licenses through Fordham State University. In 2016, 2017 school year, actually at the end of that time, which will be his 43rd year with the Dodge City Public Schools, Mr. Cunningham will retire. Mr. Cunningham stated, "I am honored to be a part of this school district, pride in being a Red Demon even if just an adoption like me. Permeates this community like nowhere I have ever seen. Each new generation of students entering our schools respects and honors that heritage through their school spirit, which is the envy of schools across the state. For me, Dodge City has been a great place to learn and grow as an educator and as a person. It is a great place to begin my career and a great place to end it." It is my honor to introduce Mr. Cunningham to all of you this evening. As always. Just a brief overview for the day, same format as it's been the last couple of years. We will start the day, our first home football game on Friday, September 2nd, and there'll be a pep assembly at Dodge City High School where we will introduce and present both of our recipients to our student body. Following the pep rally, we will hang the banners in our commons area. They're both printed, ready to roll already, so we're good to go. And then there will be a luncheon for the recipients, family, board members, people who want to come and spend a little bit of time and have some opportunity to, for visitation. And then later that day or that evening, we will do our official induction into the Ring of Honor at the halftime of the football game. So we are very excited. The committee, the selection committee was, had a pretty good idea of who they wanted to have in the mix this year when they came, so my job is very easy this year to facilitate that meeting. So thank you again.
Thanks, Jackie.
Thank you, Jackie.
Congratulations.
Don't call me it. Congratulations, Alan.
Move on.
And move on, Rickenberg as well.
All right. All right, next up we have Dr. Ramona Buckner with Human Resources.
Good evening, Madam President, School Board Members, Mr. Cunningham. It's my pleasure to report to you tonight that we have no full-time teaching positions open.
Yay!
Yeah. Well, that is a good reason to celebrate. I see that you have a report showing our open positions, and aside from a halftime counseling position at Will Rhodes Garden, which by the way, we're interviewing an individual for that this Wednesday, that is open. And then you will see on your report also that there are some openings for certified teachers that are after-school type positions to add academic support through a grant that Dr. Robert Vinton had written in his managing as well. Other than that, it's kind of standard openings that you'll have in a district. We always need bus drivers, food service people, paras, those kinds of things. Those openings usually, those positions usually stay open throughout the year, and we take in applications as they come in and passes along to individuals who may be looking for those types of people, so you'll probably see those open all year long. One thing that I did want to talk to you about that I put in my week in review is the reason why we're able to say that we have no full-time teaching positions open is because we've utilized several long-term substitutes this year. And it's a strategy that we think we're going to be really successful with. First of all, we have seven one-semester long-term substitutes that are coming in to hold positions for student teachers who will do their student teaching either in our district or in another district in the fall. And in the teacher, and then in the spring, they'll be ready to take that classroom on their own. So we need a long-term substitute. And in order to fill that position and have quality instruction happening, we have utilized retirees who are willing to come back for one semester and do that for us, and so we feel like those students are going to get a very solid beginning to the year. And what a benefit to that student teacher to be able to come in and have that type of situation to step into. So we feel like that's going to be a good arrangement for everyone. That leaves us with 12 two-semester long-term subs, meaning they're going to be with us all year. And in looking at the background of those people, I see that six of those people are working on either their initial or their restricted teaching license. So they have some experience, and they have some education, and they have the desire to become a classroom teacher. So we are hopeful that they will work on that throughout the year, and this time next year, we'll move them to the fully certified group. So we're excited about that opportunity. Lastly, we have six that have been long-term subs in the district for a number of years. So they have some experience, they're very reliable, the principals went to them specifically to say, "I know you can do this, will you take this position for us in the coming year?" So we feel like, even though it sounds like a high number when you say 19 long-term subs, these are not just people off the street, these are not newbies, these are people with experience that these principals have a lot of confidence in, and we feel like they're going to do a good job for us this year. And a good number of these people, hopefully at the end of the year, are going to become teachers for us. So that's exciting, too.
Great.
So that is my report for the evening. Do you have any questions about personnel staffing at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ramona. All right, business services.
Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, this evening I come to present the FY 1617 budget. The budget, the appropriate legal things have been done, it has been published in a daily newspaper in a timely manner. We have had this evening a budget hearing, so at this point, I would just note that the mill levy will stay basically exactly the same as it was last year. As I tell you, each and every year, since part of the budget is based on dollars, depending on the assessed valuation, the final assessed valuation, this is presented on a estimated assessed valuation that's given us to by the county clerk, it may go up or down, but that would, anticipate that would be very, very slightly from what is published in the budget, but that will happen, it'll never be perfect. It'll go up or down just a very small amount. Basically, it includes the raises as the board has previously indicated. It continues to fund the iPad initiative of a million two a year. What we've done is if there's any current expenses, we take that out of the million point two, but the less goes into a board-designated contingency reserve fund, so that when it's time to replace the iPads, we don't try to scramble in a single year to do that, but rather there'll be a good residue of resources to take care of that. Copies of the published budget, of the entire published budget are available in the business office. We also have a state law now that after you approve this, there'll actually be a copy at every board meeting, be they here or when we have our on-the-road board meetings in our schools, we also have one available at that point. The financial considerations, the approval of this budget will provide the board budget authority to operate Dodge City Public Schools for the coming year. And the staff recommendation, with requirements for the application notice and a public hearing being met, the Board of Education has respectfully requested to approve the budget as published for FY 1617. The board has further requested authorized the superintendent to certify the budget, as well as the clerk of the board and the board president to sign and file necessary budget documents. Are there any? budget documents. Are there any questions?
May I make a motion for approval for the fiscal 201617 budget?
Second.
Motion by Tammy and a second by Ryan, all in favor.
Thank you for taking care of that. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Bill.
The next item that's coming up this evening is, let's see, is it Demon Fields Improvement is next, right? Is that correct?
That's what we have, yeah.
Hmm?
Yes.
Okay. This was tabled by the board at the last meeting, so we could gather some additional information. Administration was also concerned about the costs, as I know some board members expressed concern about this at the last meeting. We went back, we looked at the other bids. Remember, there were two other bids received. One was about $50,000 more than the bid we're considering. The other was about $150,000 more than the bid we're considering. We looked at a possibility of reducing the quality of the project, going to sheet rock on walls and stuff, but as we discussed that, we determined the cost savings was not worth the long-term maintenance cost to that possibility. We also looked at the storm-protected area, removing it, and we have presented that number this evening. If we did remove that feature from the project, it would save $38,000. In preparing for the meeting this evening, I did ask Tom Montgomery, I said, "Is this building that we're building, is it a twenty, thirty, or forty-year building?" And Tom said, "With the storm-protected lid on the building, you would estimate it to be a fifty-year building." And at fifty years, that means the additional cost of the storm-protected area would be, I believe, $760 per year. We have included in the board information this evening, there's a letter from Mr. Gifford, the athletic director, might say that this project really originated with a district patron. We had a situation come where we had a gentleman who's in a wheelchair, whose son plays basketball for us, and he was unable to get to the seats.
Baseball.
Baseball, excuse me. I'm sorry. Boy, this has been a long day. Please forgive me today. He was unable, he plays baseball, he was unable to get to the stadium seats. And he also said, "If he needed to use the restrooms, the restrooms were absolutely not available for handicapped persons." So that's really the genesis of this project, trying to meet our responsibility to be an accessible facility for our patrons and parents. And that's kind of where it came to that point. We've also indicated in the board packet this evening on the next page, there was a question about storm-protected areas at the high school. So we did, Dodge City Middle School, keep me honest here, Glenn, thank you. And you can kind of see, the one dilemma that we had on this is to get from the area that is the accessible area in the ball field, there's really, it'd be almost impossible for someone to get there across, up, and to the middle school. So it'd make it very difficult for somebody who has a disability to do it. So those were some of the considerations. If there's any other questions that you have this evening, I'll try to answer them. We did have several questions from the board. We do appreciate you giving us some time to research those. We've tried to respond to those questions, and if there's anything else we can add, we'd be happy to do that this evening.
Well, after I've thought about this for a while, since we've been intentional about creating storm-protected areas throughout the district, and not that $38,000 is insignificant, but for an additional $38,000, I would like to go ahead, as an individual, of course, my recommendation would be to go ahead and spend that money on making those storm-protected areas bathrooms, so.
I might mention, too, that when the original Capitol Outlay Project was proposed and the cost was estimated, and it was made very clear those were estimates, I don't think at that time we'd included any of the renovation to the current concession and current restroom areas, which probably need it very badly, because we can't secure anything in that building the way it is right now. And that then would in turn provide space where the current restrooms are for the umpires, referees, and so on, to have the space they need to change, and also then to leave their materials in a secure area. So we're not going to be tearing out anything, we're just going to be double-purposing what we currently have for restrooms for the umpires. And if, I believe, do we have a copy of the?
I've got one over here if somebody wants to look at it.
The restroom is not going to be where it is now. I mean, it's, yeah, if you've got a copy, because I don't know if they've ever seen, it is intended to be, it will be a new construction. And that's why the site work is included in here right now, because it's going to be on a spot that, oh, you've just got the giant one?
I've just got the giant one.
Okay.
Sorry. That's what I get to do, is carry around plans for all the time.
So this total, the $393,000, that does include the concrete and? It includes, I think it also includes sidewalks.
Okay.
I believe, which we had not included earlier.
Okay, access to, okay.
And basically, the number of fixtures in this plan, what you do to meet code, you take the seating area of the stadium, and there's a code requirement of how many people it seats versus how many places, how many fixtures you need, both either toilets, urinals, sinks, and that's what we did when we designed the plan. It does meet the current code. So that's, that's.
This is at Demon Field?
I'm sorry, what?
That's going to be at Demon Field?
Yes, that's at the baseball facility. And really, the baseball facility, and one of the things Jay made a point of, the baseball facility is used for practice basically on a daily basis for our kids during baseball season. It's also used for programs during the summer. Even though it's not our program, it's our kids that are involved in those programs. So it does get quite a bit of use from out in the city.
So the baseball fields you're talking about are the ones, not the one that the A's or whatever?
Yes, it is that one.
It is that one.
It's the Tri-Five Memorial Stadium. There was another question that was raised about softball, and I have another.
No, no, Bill, excuse me. The Dodge City A's used the one out, that's the Cavalier Field. Yeah, the field where, yeah, yeah, this is the one right next to the middle.
This is the one.
Right across the street. From Dodge City Middle School.
Yeah, right by the football field.
On Morgan.
It has the colored seating.
Yeah. So, that's. There had been a question about softball, and we had talked about softball in fact in the master plan for the high school. We put that together several years ago. There are a couple of places that could be developed into softball fields, but the recommendation at that time, from the athletic department, was they felt like there were more pressing needs because of the availability of the city fields that's kind of down the road there. Now, I'm not saying that's a long-term solution or whatever, I'm just saying, as they looked at their priorities, that was kind of what they said. So that's, it's not that we're trying to not take care of every program, but we said if we ever did want to, there is a place in the master plan if you ever want to do that. Of course, if we do that, then we all have restrooms there, locker rooms, so forth, so it's a little larger project. But there is a place to do it if you ever want to.
Okay.
So the original estimate and the original plan that was proposed at the beginning of the year is different than what it?
Absolutely.
Came out to evolve to.
Yes, it evolved, because I'll be candid, I didn't have any clue that we needed quite this many restrooms, because we don't go out and have all the details done until you approve a project. Because I don't like to go out and spend a bunch of money on architects and engineers to get this stuff until you say, "Yes, we're in the rest of the plan." So we kind of take a reasonable estimate out of it. But, you know, we didn't realize how many fixtures we needed to meet the code. Turned out a little bigger than we thought on that. And the original estimate did not include remodeling the current facility. In fact, we went through some generations trying to remodel the current facility to make it work. It got more expensive, the building from scratch, because by the time you had to tear everything out, add on to the building, it just, you know, sometimes it's more expensive to remodel that than to do this. The other thing is, we really had to address the issues. I mean, officials, they really don't have a good place right now to get ready for a game. So we felt like that was a definite improvement in the next year or so. It evolved, absolutely, it evolved.
I know I'm, my husband accused me of being cheap, but when we can build a house for $200,000, but we had to build a bathroom and some, I mean, I know there's more than just a restroom, but the way it was initially written, I mean, it's just a sticker shock, I guess.
I'll tell you the sticker shock I had. My dear daughter in back by Washington, D.C., she called me the other night, and she's buying her first house. And it's not a house, it's a townhouse, and it's 1,200 square feet. And she told me the price, and I'm glad I was sitting down. It was $267 a square foot. And I just couldn't believe that, that's, yeah, that was sticker shock for me, because I see what you could buy in this part of this country for that.
So, Bill, tell us again, I think you said, if we did the storm-protected, and it was a fifty-year building, you gave us an annual cost?
What I did is take the $38,000, divide it by fifty years, and that's $760 a year. And I guess what I was trying to look at at that point is, when you look at the map where the other storm-protected areas are, it'd be extremely difficult for somebody to get from the field to the middle school if they're in a wheelchair. We have not provided access to the top of that stadium. What we've done is we've provided wheelchair access to the lower level of seating by the stadium. And we think, I think that'll solve any complaints. If we want to be technically in compliance with ADA, they talk about your seating for handicapped or persons with disabilities, get this right, I think that's the right definition, should be intermixed. You'd have to spend a whole lot more money to go back and get a switchback sidewalk to get to the top, and we're not recommending that. We feel like this will meet our needs locally. So that's it. So we felt like for $760 a year, again, with the emphasis that you as a board put on safety for all of our students across the district, if we had kids out there practicing or something, or if we had somebody in the summer, when our buildings may not be open, or I, we just felt it makes sense to have that. You're the board, we will work at your discretion, you tell us what to do or not. It gets pretty simple.
Yeah, because I was never not in favor of the project. I was just wanting to see if there were some areas where we could possibly cut costs, but I would prefer not to cut cost in the area of safety for backup of the letterwork, especially since we've been so intentional about trying to do that throughout the other parts of the district.
And I think when you see it on the map, how far it actually is to get to the middle school, storm-protected areas, and for the cost, I guess I tend to agree with Ryan that it makes sense to add that, in my view. Do you feel that you've had enough time to think through all of the different things that, you know, you keep adding on? Have we added on everything that we need to at this point, do you feel?
I think this was a great step. If Jay Gifford were here, he would be talking about the press box. I can guarantee you that, because the press box there is limited. We can't do everything at one time. So we feel like this is the best thing that needs to be done. And as Jay, you know, and I talked to Jay, and he responded to some of the questions that were asked by board members. He said, "Bill, I really don't want to go back to the family person," except he was, you know, he was in a wheelchair, and said, "You really don't have the option to see, you know, your son playing," and said, "At least, J. should be to our seating area, and we really don't have a place decent for you to have a restroom." So that's, it's just an issue. These things are expensive. I wish they were cheaper. We've talked to the architect, we've talked to other builders, we've talked to a number of people. It's just, I don't know what else to do other than say, "If you want this, we can do it." If some of the board doesn't, good.
Bill, besides Demon Field and obviously Memorial Stadium, do we have other facilities that need to be brought up to compliant?
We had a situation with one of our elementary schools a couple of years ago where we had concerns about handicapped available restrooms. We finally did put a handicapped available restroom, you know, kind of a family restroom in that facility. I think most of the others are in pretty good shape, but I'm not going to say there isn't something out there someplace.
Yeah. You're not mic'd, so nobody's hearing anything but them.
I'm sorry.
I think that what we've tried to do is look at them. I think on most situations in most buildings, especially our newer buildings, we're in pretty good shape. It doesn't mean there won't be something that comes out that we've become aware of. Also, ADA is kind of a moving target. The law was written intentionally to be somewhat elastic, if you will. And you go back to the people who authored the law, including Bob Dill, and they'll say that was intentional, because they knew they couldn't get everything in the law that they maybe wanted to put in. So it's kind of an evolving law. There are some different code standards for what we're building today than when they built the high school, for example. We've talked about that, we've dealt with that. I think this one, if we can get this, the other two areas that are huge, and we've talked about it as a board, is the administration building. This is an embarrassment. You've all agreed with that. You've directed administration to look at that, we're doing it. And then we really need to look at Memorial Stadium at some point. Those are the two big ones that I'm aware of. But again, I won't say that tomorrow, somebody won't come up with something someplace else and we say, "Gee, we should have seen that." I mean, we tried, but I think these are.
I move to approve the original bid on the project.
Including the storm-protected area.
Yeah, yeah, so that would be the $393,000, is that correct, Alan?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Brian. I got confused there for a minute, but I'm all right. Does anybody have any other comments they want to make? Nope, all right, all in favor? Six zero.
Thank you. See, I have.
I think you've got, I think you're done.
Oh, bank, I have bank account. Page eighty-one. In the infinite wisdom of our state legislature, they passed a law or a regulation or whatever that on early childhood funds, instead of them just basically wire transferring the money to the district, they're now putting those funds on a card, and you're going to keep me honest on this one, everybody else kept me honest on something else, and we have to take that card and download the money in our system.
Through the subsidy?
Yes.
You have to now collect subsidy?
The card is, the card goes to parents, right?
Card goes to the parents, and they're paid through the state, there's subsidies that they're supposed to be able to use for childcare. And then if they're in our childcare center, then we will collect their subsidy payment directly from the parent, instead of our Kansas Early Head Start Grant just paying for the childcare.
So in order to accomplish that, the business office, we need to set up a special bank account, so the money transfers into that bank account from that card, and that way we can track it.
Are there fees for this bank account?
No.
Darn.
What we have is, well, I say no. Let me, let me make a comment. What we do, we keep a large enough balance in our bank accounts that we don't get charged soft fees. And that's a pretty significant balance, but we're able to do that as a district. So yes, we won't, you won't see any charges. I can't explain this anymore. And I thank Alan, he cleaned up my board consideration sheet. I gave it to him, and it was a mess, and I thank you, Alan.
Electronic bank transfers, that's all I know. We just have to have a special account to receive.
We really don't.
Sounds like we have to do it.
Yeah, if we want money, we have to set up the account to receive the funds.
Okay, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ryan and a second by Brian, all in favor.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, Mr. Cunningham?
Unless you just want to go through about sixty pages of the board policies that you've seen a couple of times for the last month.
I was going to say, didn't you show us that already?
I won't make you do that. We have them ready for you.
Aaron's excited.
Yeah, she looks really eager. Maybe we should go ahead.
Karen's got her finger on the button over here. There have been no changes from what was presented last time to you. We recommend the adoption of all the policies as amended by KASB, and then also the couple that we amended here locally, especially the one on use of school facilities. However, we are recommending, as we told you the last time, that we do not adopt the policy that was offered by KASB regarding prohibition against using, either by students or by staff, of using video recording equipment such as their cameras, their cell phones, whatever. We just, we take care of that right now. It's not been a big issue. And to have a policy that prohibits the use of it, just seems like we'd be spending more time policing than we do teaching and learning. And so with that exception, we recommend that the policies as presented to you be approved and included in the board policy handbook effective immediately.
I make a motion for approval.
All right, we have a motion by Tammy and a second by Tracy, all in favor? Six zero.
Okay, the last thing on pages eighty-four through eighty-six have to do with the superintendent search timeline. I believe what you have in front of you is representative of the work that you did with Dr. Meckel at the work session with the Board of Education to set up some timelines. And so if you don't mind, I'll just kind of summarize these for you, for the good of the public. The application for superintendent of schools position with USD 443 will be officially open on November 1st and close on Friday, December 30th. The period between now and September 16th, we are asking board members and building administrators, program administrators, department, supervisors of the various departments in the district to submit the names of some folks who would like to sit in with KASB on a superintendent focus group to identify the characteristics and traits they'd like to see in the superintendent of schools. That session will be held on Monday, November 14th, prior to the board meeting that evening, at which time the board will then also hear from KASB on what they heard in these sessions, and then the board will add what they believe they would like to see at the same time.
Alan, were we going to do?
We're going to do that on Tuesday. And taking a look, we thought there's too many staff to be able to get it done on, too many staff, and they wouldn't be available until after school. And with 1,100 employees, we don't know how many of them will want to have input in that, but just having one time available after And taking a look, we thought there's too many staff to be able to get it done on, too many staff, and they wouldn't be available until after school, and with 1,100 employees, we don't know how many of them will want to have input in that, but just having one time available after school for one 45-minute or two 45-minute periods, we didn't think would be sufficient. So we've asked Doug Meckel, he's agreed to come in Monday afternoon and have some of these Tuesday morning and Tuesday afternoon, which would afford our local folks the opportunity to be heard, to provide input at least twice. And then that would necessitate moving the Board of Education member meeting for Monday to Tuesday with Doug Meckel. In the meantime, we'd like to send out, once we get a list of folks that you would like to invite to these meetings, focus group meetings, we'll send out a keep the date postcard, so everybody gets it on their calendar, we have a letter that's been drafted and reviewed by President Killian, that will go out then to each one of them, inviting them to the meeting, have a postcard that'll go out a few days prior to the meeting, just as a reminder to be there. We also anticipate making an application available online, where people, if they're not able to attend this meeting, could contribute their thoughts, excuse me, online. And then the board will have a summary of all this information before they meet with Mr. Meckel that evening. The rest of the timeline, I think, is that KASB has committed to us, they will screen the applicants for superintendent of schools position between December 30th and January 5th. On January 5th, they would like to meet with the Board of Education in a special meeting, an executive session, to review the candidates and their recommendations. Then January 6th through 9th, we'd be doing additional reference checks. On Monday, the 9th of January, you'll have a Board of Education meeting where you'll finalize the folks to be interviewed, if not before that time, but at least that evening you'll, you'll know who the finalists are. And then, going to hit the ground running, the next day, Tuesday through Friday that week, we'd like to schedule interviews with the candidates, the next Monday or Tuesday, make a site visit in case one of the candidates is not a local person, and then by the end of that week, have a contract offer and accept it, and have the board act on it at their second, their luncheon meeting in January. Typically, superintendent contracts are renewed in January, and we think it's just fair that if we're going to hire someone who might not be a part of our district already, that we need to give them the courtesy of letting them know, letting, having them have the ability to let their board know whether or not they'll be accepting another contract. This is pretty aggressive interview schedule, and if we get pushed back a week, we still are okay, we've still got some time left in January, but it's going to mean a lot of requirement, a lot of time for you all, and this is the one, by statute, the one most important job of the school board, and I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the diligence that you're willing to put forth to find the right person for our school district. So if this schedule meets with your approval, I'd ask you to adopt it, and we can make changes later if we need to, if something comes up, but this way, it'll give us the go-ahead to get these things going.
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Second. All right, we've got a motion by Ryan and a second by Barbara, all in favor? Six zero.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Board of Education, member district responsibilities, Barbara, do you have anything on park and rec?
I think you've seen what's been going on with the Long Branch Lagoon, we talked about that at the meeting on July the 12th, tomorrow, I'm sure we'll talk about it again. In addition to that, Dodge City Days has been a big part of the Parks and Rec, and they're, they've been preparing for it, and now that's history. They wanted us to know, and on the board of Parks and Recreation, that the Mariah Hills Restaurant is open at noon, had been closed for a while, I suppose they wouldn't mind if I mentioned that. And lastly, I wanted to point out that Legend Parks has been very active this summer with the new softball and baseball coach, I mean, head lead, and it's been going very well, the activity, lots of activity out there.
Good, thank you. Okay, Tracy, bright beginnings?
They've had, they had a total of 169 families attend orientation last week, all of the Head Start spots are filled, and they're still filling the remaining 31 openings with children who've enrolled in the past week, and they have some new staff, they've done some fresh painting, teachers and family advocates are beginning to schedule home visits, and they're going to be working with new teachers this week and the entire staff on Monday. And they have an open house next Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:30.
Okay, sounds good. Special education, do we?
Jeff and I attended together, as usual, customary business to start the school year.
Okay. Ryan, do you have anything on legislative?
No, just to mention that I will be attending a KASB Legislative Committee, we have a committee meeting on this month, the 26th and 27th, so I'll go up for that, I sure will bring some information back for our next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Capitol Outlay, we don't have anything going on on that, Calendar Committee hasn't met yet, and we have Jeff scheduled to review the bills before our September meeting. As far as announcements, August, whoops, that's today, August 10th, new teacher orientation and introductions at the Learning Center at 10:30. August 15th, all-staff breakfast from 7:00 to 7:45, and the back-to-school and welcome in the Dodge City High School Auditorium at 8:00 AM. August 17th, first day of classes, and August 22nd will be our next Board of Education, it'll be a luncheon meeting at Miller, beginning at noon. Do we have items for future board meetings? We do have scheduled September 12th, they're going to give us a review on the teacher-mentor and new teacher induction program, and then our October meeting will have iPad Initiative and Technology Integration.
I might remind the board that we've tentatively scheduled a meeting for next Monday evening as well, the 15th, so 15th is going to be a busy day.
Yes.
To meet with Bill Hammond and I, it'll be a work session, talk about superintendent transition a little, and also do a budget 101 workshop for the board members, so you have a better understanding of what our school district's budget looks like and where it comes from. So that's next Monday evening at 5:30, and we will provide a light supper for that meeting.
Okay. Anybody have anything for future meetings? Last week, Tammy and I went up to Hays for KASB leadership training, and I feel like it was beneficial, worth our time. Just kind of, we went over, a lot of it was we had a chance to talk about how to work through, how we would work through different situations, we also got a little insight on superintendent evaluations with the, with the new superintendent. By law, we're required to do two evaluations a year for the first two years, and then we can go back to annually on the third year for the superintendent, so just little information for you. Can you think of anything else that?
Other than, they complimented Dodge City School District.
Yes.
Several people.
Yes.
Several board members and superintendents came up to us and said, "We've heard great things about you and your school district," and raved about you, and we said, "We tried to bribe you and stay in another year or two," but.
You've done that for the last seven?
I know, didn't work, but absolutely, they said they've gone to trainings, come here for trainings, just every, I mean, just.
And the, what's the leadership?
Leadership for tomorrow. I'm still getting good emails and responses.
Yeah, they raved and raved about that.
That's what we keep hearing, and then they kept, kept coming up and asking us, "How do you do this, and what do you do this?" So, that's a good thing to hear.
Yeah. All right, so, I guess I get back over here. All right, so we need an executive session for discussion of personnel matters and for preliminary discussions about the acquisition of real property, how much time do we need?
15 minutes, and I'd like to ask Bill Hammond and Ramona Buckner to stay with us, please.
Okay.
I make a motion for 15 minutes for executive session.
Motion by Tammy and a second by Tracy, all in favor? Six zero. Thank you, everyone.